Meeting to order, we do have, looking for an approval of the agenda, I do have an agenda addition that we'll take right before item number three. Nancy Canalka, our deputy editor.
We'll approve what's addition.
We have a motion to approve with the addition by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Citizens to be heard, is there anyone wishing to speak on anything not advertised on the agenda? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Heaney.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Item number two is the Tomorrow LLC Statement of Support for the Expansion of Treatment Beds, good morning. And Rhonda will not be here, but Pat is here with the crew. Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, how about if we'll do introductions first and then I'll start.
Okay, and then make sure that whoever's speaking grabs a mic, please.
Hi, I'm Leanne LaFrance, I am an LADC and Treatment Director at Anchorage Tomorrow LLC.
Okay.
Pat Boyer from Social Services.
Chris Ferris, Program Director at Anchorage Treatment Center.
I'm Carmen Wilson, the owner of Tomorrow LLC, DBA Anchorage.
Okay, so I'll start us off and then everybody else will chime in or answer any questions. So, and you guys remember, some of you may remember, Carmen was here several years ago, but she has been the owner operator of Anchorage CD Treatment Center for quite a number of years, before they bought their building, the America Square, they were in Towns End Center for a number of years. So she's been around the county a long time. We have, we started meeting about this bed issue, I want to say way last January, we started talking about it. So, over the months, what we have come up with is the board and lodge beds that they have been providing to Clay County over the past several years, they're just not financially feasible to continue. And one of the reasons for that is because that the clients that are being put into those beds really need more clinical services. So Carmen proposed to have, right now they have fourteen board and lodge beds and sixteen treatment beds. Carmen proposed to change those board and lodge beds to treatment beds as well and add two more, so it would be a total of thirty-two, but sixteen treatment beds on one side, sixteen treatment beds on the other side, they would split the genders.
Can you briefly describe the difference between the board and lodge and the treatment?
Sure, sure. Can I do that again?
Sure, I can do that. The difference between the board and lodge beds, board and lodge is with housing support services is a very low intensity of care, in fact, most of the clients are very independent, free to come and go, they have certain rules as far as staying sober and clean in our facility. Most of them don't have the support services to do it, so that's why we're recommending that we go to a higher level of care, which is the residential treatment beds. A lot of these clients would fit into the medium and low intensity so that they can get the clinical supports and care coordination that they really need to be successful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then on the board motion sheet that I did send off to you on page two, I just talked about communication I had had with some city staff, county staff, and I just wanted to add on the morning Police Department, Shannon Monroe did get back to me, he said there was no additional feedback, other than what former police chief David Ebbinger provided to us way back in February of 2018, just that at that time Anchorage had not presented any public safety concerns regarding the proposed expansion, because we have been talking about this expansion for a year.
Okay, all right, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, so what, what we are required to do as a county is we have to provide a letter of support to licensing in order for them to move ahead with licensing sixteen beds for treatment. We, I believe that we are in need of more treatment beds, we continue to send people out of county for treatment, there's a waitlist at most treatment facilities in Minnesota. And we're doing a lot of transports, sending people to facilities outside of Clay County, so I believe that the beds, the beds will be used, will be used for them. Anything more you guys want to add to?
What type of, like, do you have professional services, what kind of professional services do you have, and do you have mental health professional services available as well?
Yes, we are co-occurring at this time, so we have a licensed mental health professional on staff, LPCC, in our residential, our outpatient services are not co-occurring, however, with the licensing, the way that it is set up now, as the owner was saying, as an agency, we do our due diligence and we want to serve, you know, our clients, and so we do spend a lot of clinical services that we do not get reimbursed for, because we are, you know, we want to do an ethical job, so anytime any client is in any of our programs, we utilize those services even if they are not reimbursed. So a lot of time, our clients are getting those services, if there's a crisis or if there's any immediate need, our outpatient, you know, counselor will call, we do have licensed addiction counselor, LPCC, we've got master levers counselors who are ready to take their applications for continued LPCC, so we do have the staffing and professional licensing to continue growing.
Okay, that's good to hear. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Gross?
Now, these services and what's our, we have a detoxification program too here, I mean, how much difference is this service than that program?
Okay, okay, so this is the place that people usually go after detoxification services, this is more of a longer-term treatment facility, the typical average length of stay is what?
Forty, forty-five days?
Forty-five days.
Detoxification services, the way the treatment services work in the state is they require us to look at the clinical appropriateness for placement, we couldn't take a client who was under, you know, under intoxication, when our, when clients come to us, we do an assessment, our nurse will assess their health, their vitals, all of that, we will assess their last state of use, if there is certain levels of criteria where we feel the client may have withdrawal symptoms, or there may be a seizure later, or there may be something that could put the client at risk when there is not a nurse in the building, then we will have to coordinate with Clay County and then we transport the client to detox, they would detox safely in detoxification, and then once that client has been medically cleared for services, they will give us a call and then they return back to us after they have been stabilized. So that immediate level of care just reduces the chances that the client may harm themselves because they are not yet stable to be in the type of service that we offer long term, those are the difference in that level.
Oh, just sort of, why don't we have just one program, you know, just?
So we are, the state of Minnesota is moving that way, the way that it's currently set up is a licensing issue, so you have to have a different license for every service that you offer. We do not have detoxification with certain treatment services, if you had withdrawal management, then we could get reimbursed to have nursing staff, to have people on staff at all times, it's a funding issue, and they don't reimburse for watching the client, you know, twenty-four hours to make sure they don't have a seizure, to make sure that these things don't happen. And, I mean, unfortunately, nursing services are expensive, if we're going to have an RN who's, you know, reliable, capable to save lives twenty-four hours a day, we have to be reimbursed from, the state just doesn't do that, so that's an issue, and it is coming with SUD reform, 2019, it's expected to roll in, that we will have withdrawal management reimbursed, and when that happens, it's definitely the way we will be moving, so.
Commissioner Campbell?
So, so you currently have sixteen beds there right now?
Yes, sir.
That are the, the full treatment, inpatient treatment type, then you have, and what you're talking about is converting the fourteen beds that you had that were more of the outpatient to the same, is that what you're trying to do here?
Fourteen we had were housing support, yes.
So, so right now you have, you have thirty beds?
Correct.
Yep.
And you, so now you're, you're going to end up with thirty-two?
Yes.
And they're all going to be the full treatment?
Treatment.
As opposed to the portion that are limited?
Correct, currently, in the residential treatment facility, it's co-ed, our goal is to split the genders so that we can reduce a lot of risks that are involved with housing the same gender, we're going to split the programs, there is a division wall-in-between the two programs with a locked door, that's why we're able to get a separate sixteen-bed license through DHS, and that saves the county some expenditures, because if we were to have them as one thirty-two-bed program, then it goes into the IMD Institute for Mental Disease Status, and the county's share portion that their, finance portion that they're responsible for goes up quite a bit, so this is the best way to utilize this, the funding, the Consolidated Chemical Dependency Treatment Fund, and work with the county to provide these services.
And the sixteen beds that you currently have, that is the, the full treatment?
Treatment.
Are they, are they in a come-and-go-as-they-want-to thing?
No.
So they're, that's, that's more of a, they're there and they're staying in the program type of deal?
Yes.
It is elective, though, it is elective, they can't, a lot of clients will come in and choose on their choice to come in for treatment, a lot of it is based on their probation, we have a handful of clients that are committed to treatment, so it varies depending on the population.
Okay, so, so those that are, there's some that you might say are kind of forced there through a court order, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and so, so those people don't have the ability to just walk out?
It's not locked, though. No, yeah, we are not a locked facility.
Okay.
All of our clients are there by their own free will, everybody has motivation, yes, everybody has motivation to enter and complete treatment or not, we are all of our own free will, some have external motivation, some have other things pushing them, some want their children back, some want to get through court, some don't want to go to prison, I think the difference that you're trying to get through is, the other side does do not, whether it's legal restriction, we don't have a license to say that these things by statute require that we do A, B, C, and D, because we are not a licensed program under state statutes on the fourteen-bed facility. Over here DHS licenses us and says, by statute, these are the services that they are required to have, these are the Client Bill of Rights you must follow, here's the things the state, the city, every, you must do these things for them, we cannot have the clients over here, if they say, I don't want to do that, well, we really don't have a lot of options to call in, you know, probation, to call in other things, because they're under a different licensing, and they have different restrictions and freedoms, and really, a whole slew of different options that go with that.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Heaney?
In your cost impact and funding source paragraph, you say the county is already paying twenty-two point nine five percent of all CCDTF bills.
Correct.
What does that come to?
Money-wise?
Yes.
Ooh, I'd have to check.
That's probably around, the question, Rhonda's ill today, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, I can get that to you, though, we can get that to you.
Okay, and so then that-
So that's our percentage?
That's our percentage for any consolidated funding bill, so what, no matter where they're going to treatment?
Right.
The county has to pay that percentage.
Okay, but I was trying to get handle on-
Percentage.
What the major change is, how much is, it says it does not foresee a major change, so-
Well, because we're already sending people to treatment, it might be in other counties across the state, but now, hopefully, we'll be able to send them here, so we won't be traveling as much.
Okay.
And so there really shouldn't be a change county, you know, as far as the total amount the county pays, because we're already paying it.
All right, thank you.
Questions, Commissioner Wayland?
I just, unfortunately, it sounds like the need is there, like it always is, and social services supports this, it sounds like, so, and what you're looking for is just to send a letter of support, is that to the state or, I'll make the motion to approve that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve, and a second by Commissioner Heaney.
Can I just, one follow-up question, in terms of the, the types of, of chemical dependency issues that you're seeing there, are, are you seeing a real change from alcohol to other, you know, like the opioids and stuff like that, is there?
I don't know, you, you do Danes a lot, so you're good to see.
I would say, over the past two years, there's been a dramatic increase in both the methamphetamine dependence as well as the opioid dependence, it has drifted away, a lot of times clients will come in with multiple diagnoses, so as we interim and we do our assessment, we'll do the top three substances. Alcohol as a single substance, we find very few people that solely come into our agency with alcohol dependence solely, usually it's, it's multiple diagnoses, and I would say methamphetamines and opioids are on the top of our list.
And, and do you, so when they go through your forty-five-day program that you have there, I mean, this is kind of a big deal for all of us, this is what we're struggling with, major in our, in our budgets, are you doing any research to, once they leave your facility, as to how they're doing, and do we, do we have statistical information that says this has worked, or?
Well, there was a, this year with the SUD reform, there had been a pilot project going on for a couple of years now, because what we had found was it wasn't really working because there wasn't a continuum of service that followed the client, it's akin to someone with cancer, they go into remission, and they have to follow up every so often, and that wasn't happening with treatment clients, treatment clients finished treatment and then they did outpatient, then they were on their own, there's no follow-up services and there's no recommendations, there's not really, there wasn't any clinical, you know, requirements scientifically with research that you would follow, they've worked really hard now, all over the state, all over the country, to kind of get this going, and with the SUD reform that we're rolling into, that is what they've done, is we've built this continuum of care, so with our agency, that's where we're moving, we've got a lot of the parts into play, we're, we're building it, we're ready to go, I think we're probably more ready than anybody in our immediate area, and I can say that with some quite confidence, and that will look like high intensity, medium intensity, low intensity, the number of service hours that go outpatient, then when the client leaves, you are then hooked up with what's called a peer specialist, that person will attend medical appointments with you, go to meetings, shopping, you actually would get reimbursed now, we can actually offer this as a service, and then you also have a treatment coordinator where that person will be responsible to help you as part of your discharge planning, go to CPS appointments with you, continue to follow you, you know, with court cases, you're not just on your own now when you leave treatment, there's supports that we can offer as an agency that we, were never reimbursable, and, and unfortunately, treatment is a business, and no business can last if there's not a funding piece that we're able to offer, so I think that's what was missing, and they did do, and I don't have the exact numbers, but they followed it for a number of years, and 2019 we will be able to, it was approved, 2018 it became legal, we're getting the funding pieces, we have a follow-up, I think, on the sixth to get some more answers on when exactly these things should be coming, and then we'll be heading that direction, so.
We've, we've already implemented the peer specialists-
Yep.
And the care coordinator at no reimbursement expense.
Right, we have been, we have been doing those ourselves without being reimbursed.
To help our clients gain success in this area.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Session? We do have a motion and a second on the table, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Nancy, we'll take your agenda addition. You wanted the addition first, correct?
Yes.
Good morning.
Hi. I am asking that the board approve on resolution the tax forfeit list of properties that we have this year, we have three properties, two are houses and one is a bare lot.
Motion by Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you, so, the second piece is a request from Arlene Hagan to repurchase the tax forfeit property.
I don't see Arlene being here.
Okay. Was she, I see in the letter she wanted to be made aware, was she made aware at the time?
Yes, she was, yeah.
Okay.
She was your mind.
Okay.
She is wishing to repurchase a property that is on her tax forfeit list, and she has the right to do so. Hi, are you Arlene?
Hi.
Are you Arlene?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Hi, Arlene, why don't you come up and sit, sit up here, please? Good morning.
Stuck here.
Sorry to rush you. Arlene, we do have a letter from you that basically had said that you had gone to pay your taxes and they had said you needed to come speak with us.
Yes.
So we do have your request.
The board can allow the repurchase based on the two, two criteria, number one, that it's a hardship for the owner, or two, that it's in the best interest of the county to allow the repurchase, now, when I spoke with Arlene before, I believe that she indicated to me that she probably has a purchaser for the property.
Okay.
Is that correct? And I've been in contact with them as well, that would get it back on the tax rolls, we could also sell it if you deny the repurchase, but we don't know when anybody might be interested in it, so.
Right, right.
If she has a person, that would probably be in the best interest of the county, but that's up to you.
Okay, Arlene, is that, that something that, that you've communicated with another purchaser?
Yes.
Their intent to purchase the property?
Yep, and his, his intentions, his parents live next door.
Okay.
And, I'm out of breath when I'm climbing these steps.
I'm sorry.
But his, his parents live next door.
Okay.
And he wants to purchase the property and tear the house down and haul everything out, put in new septic system and everything, and put something new in there, to live next door to his elderly parents and help them out.
Okay, and were they prepared to do that in the next few weeks, what was the time?
Probably after the first of the year.
Okay, and does that fall within?
Well, we would have to do estate deed first, which would probably take a few weeks and so, before it would be put into Arlene's name.
Right, I, you know, I, I'm not sure what the rest of the board feels, but I feel like, I don't know if the county needs to take on something of this sort, if there's another interested party that would prefer, we don't need the government to get involved in, in that, but.
Move to approve their request.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell, any further discussion?
What happens if this doesn't fall, if they don't agree?
Well, I just talked to him a week and a half ago, and he's very interested, because...
I do know if it, if it doesn't go through, the property will still be in Arlene's name and she would be responsible for the taxes again.
And then we go through the same thing again here, then, or what?
If she doesn't pay for three years again, right, otherwise, if it ends up being the county property, we would offer it in our tax forfeit sale, and, and you might get a buyer, it might not.
Okay.
Further questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you, thank you for coming today, Arlene, sorry to make you come right as you walked in the door. Okay, our next item is item number four, the request approval to fill two full-time vacancies in the sheriff's office, Sheriff Berkwith, Sheriff-elect Mark Empting, and Chief Deputy Steve Larson, good morning.
Good morning. We're here to ask for approval to hire two full-time employees, which unfortunately, the day after we sent this memo, we have another retirement, Lieutenant Brian Green put in his letter, so we'd like to be able to ask for that third also, at this time. The cost impact is, has been the seven months we've been without retired Chief Deputy Matt Cerro, we didn't replace that due to the election, so that'll be replaced once Sheriff-elect Mark Empting is sworn in, and the second is Sheriff Berkwith's retirement, savings for Sheriff Berkwith is over seventy thousand dollars from a beginning employee to his current wage, I went off of the sheriff's wage because I didn't know what Sheriff-elect Empting's-
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Campbell?
If I may, I, I don't think you can use that.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think you can use that, I, we're gonna, we're gonna have a discussion on his wage, but certainly, there's not gonna be-
And that's, that's why I put in there.
... that difference in, in a new sheriff coming in.
That's, that's why I put in the caveat of-
I mean, that's certainly my opinion.
Yeah, I didn't have a number.
If we follow, if we follow tradition that this board has done, and you know that as well.
We, we do have the savings from Chief Deputy's Cerro's wages of about sixty-five thousand, and then a new hire coming in compared to Brian Green's wages would be about forty thousand, there is going to be some, some cost savings as we, we move forward here, I did talk to Darren Brooke just briefly here, and he, he does feel that as well, correct there, that we would have some, has some cost savings moving forward, even hiring the third FTE.
And the numbers I'm going by is strictly salary, not the fringe benefits that are paid.
Commissioner Wayland?
I was just, I would, I don't, I hate to make this so easy on the sheriff-elect's first request, but I wouldn't approve the three.
We have a motion to approve the three positions by Commissioner Wayland, a second by Commissioner Gross.
Madam Chair, I, I'm assuming, are we looking at any, so there might be people, these are positions where they can advance to, is that correct, or are we looking at backfill then, or?
This is going to be backfill, hiring of three new employees, we are going through the promotional process, since the dominos will fall, since the sheriff's been elected, to replace lieutenants and replace sergeants.
That's my point, though, so your, so your request is to replace these positions, and would, and you're going to probably be replacing them from within.
Correct.
It's the hire three new.
Yeah.
Huh?
It's the hire three new.
Right, these are upper tier.
Right.
Yeah, your, the request to include backfill, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, we will be doing that, we're, we're moving forward, we're going to be promoting three lieutenants, promoting three sergeants, and then the three new hires would be falling in to wherever we have openings.
So, does the motion second support the backfill?
My order.
Commissioner Gross, does-
Well, that's true, but I guess I understood this, I mean, the internal promotions are going to happen, whether we approve anything here or not, I think the, isn't the request here just to hire three new ones?
Correct, it is to hire three new ones.
It is to fill the vacancies that we have.
Right.
After all the promotions are taken care of.
Yep.
Okay.
But, the backfill has to be approved here in order for those promotions to-
Exactly.
Correct.
Get her done.
Now, we have a lot of work to do in the next.
And, and talk, and also talking about the salary for the sheriff, I've had discussion with, with HR and Steve Larson, I believe that'll be something that the pick will discuss, to recommend to this.
Yep, and I also, also met, just informally with Steve yesterday, and I'd like to meet formally with him, probably next week, and after the Thanksgiving rush here and everything kind of settles down, so.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations as well to you.
Thank you, thank you. Take care, buddy, thanks.
All right, our next item is a closed session to discuss union contract, pardon? Pardon?
I said that's my last meeting here with you guys.
Thank you for your service, Sheriff. You might not be that lucky, Bill, so.
We'll see, we'll see.
We'll see, we've got six people.
I'll make motion to close.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wayland to close the session.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Okay, we're back open now, we'll move into item number six of our meeting, committee reports, Commissioner Campbell?
Oh, yes, thank you. Last Tuesday, the thirteenth, we had three different meetings, the first was the highway tracking meeting, and it was a special one that we called in regards to the local road improvement project that dealt with on 50th Avenue North, there was, I had heard that there was maybe some potential that some local cost share couldn't be met here, and we could lose that five hundred thousand dollar grant, and I didn't see that as an option, so I asked for Highway Tracking to meet, and we are now, Dave is going to work with Oakport and Murray Township and, and possibly Dilworth, and trying to come to some sort of resolution to get that done, so I'll see what develops there. The same day, we also had the Regional Juvenile Extension Center project, construction project- The same day, we also had the, uh, Regional Juvenile Extension Center project, uh, construction project update. Uh, there is, uh, there is some concern, um, regarding the, um, contingency. And, um, we're about, we have about used up our owner contingency already. And, uh, so that's, and I'll let Steve, uh, touch on that a little bit, but we do have, um, we do have some other, and it has to do with some unfound stuff that took place. But, um, we have some, some options to, uh, use other potential resources in place of some of that. And I'll let Steve deal with that, you know, in his report. And then the, then the, we had the correctional facility in LAC. And the LAC, of course, is just about wrapped up. There's just a few minor little things that keep going on there. Jail is running well. Uh, you all can see that the, um, old building is going down now. That was a three-week process for that to be done. And, um, there was really no, nothing earth-shattering out of, out of those projects to, to report, other than it's progressing quite well. Then, um...
All right, one question on the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Is everybody here, all the prisoners back in now?
Yeah, I, I asked that question on Monday and I believe by this week, they said they would all be back.
They were just about all back.
Yeah, they were just about all back.
But they weren't being out in by this week.
And then, so then, uh, yesterday, we had a budget meeting with, uh, Prairie Lakes and Purim. And along with that, um, budget meeting, we got an update on the energy audit that we were talking about doing. And it looks like we're gonna see about a, we have to do like a sixty thousand dollar investment, but we will receive a return on that investment of forty-five thousand every year. So we'll invest sixty thousand one time to see, uh, returns of, um, reduced expenditures by forty thousand, forty-five thousand a year for going forward. So that's a good deal. And then we did, we did kind of come to an agreement on our cost split. We're, we're arguing over the, um, percentages of, of, um, who pays what based on capacity. Uh, Clay County is gonna be at the eighty-four hundred tons with six, the first six thousand, uh, being traded for the fines, which leaves us twenty-four hundred that we pay the tipping fee for two thousand nineteen of a hundred and twenty-three dollars, which calculates out that our, our cost of that facility for two thousand nineteen will be two hundred and ninety-six thousand. If you recall, in two thousand seventeen and eighteen, I believe that number was three hundred and forty thousand or something like that. It's considerably more. That concludes my report.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Wayland.
Uh, thank you. On Thursday, I attended the Board of Trustees for the Lake Agassiz Regional Library System. And we heard, uh, that the budget is eighty-three percent, uh, completed for the year. And, uh, then we also had the report from the, from the director, Liz Lynch, the regional director. And, uh, we heard the report that the Crookston Library remodeling project is ninety, or largely complete. And, uh, we also heard that Mary Hayney, my sister, is going to be retiring from the Detroit Lakes Public Library in January. And, uh, um, and then we also heard the welcome news that the Fertile Public Library received a wonderful behest from the State of June Erickson in the tune of ten thousand dollars. So for a, a library the size of the one in Fertile, that's a pretty big deal happened. And, uh, that's, uh, that's the whole report.
Have you discussed space needs at Morehead at that committee?
Have we discussed what?
The spa, the future space needs of the water.
No, that, that did not come up in the discussion. Um, I know what you're referring to, but no, that did not come up. Um, and then on Friday, I attended the Early Childhood Initiative, and we discussed one of the issues that, uh, um, childcare providers and, and, uh, groups that have childcare are having difficulty with what's called a background study. That is a background report on someone, and it's taking up to four weeks to get that done, and it's costing twice as much as it did previously. And, uh, there's some real issues with that because they need people, and there's quite a turnover in that childcare provider. And so they're all, all the providers that were there were expressing dismay over that. And, uh, and then we did some strategic planning for the next year for the Early Childhood Initiative, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Uh, Tuesday was also the highway tracking, which has already been discussed. Uh, Wednesday, Wild Rice Watershed Board, uh, attended that. The, the big issue up there is they're trying to remodel their place so that the Red River Board can also have a rent out to the Red River Board. And it's pretty much a split vote up there, but it did pass four to three. And after the vote was taken, our representative, uh, Dwayne Erickson, who is our representative of Wild West, offered his resignation. So since that time, I, I've got a call from Red. I think he's reconsidering it, so I'm gonna put that on hold for a little bit. But I think, um, you know, I don't, I don't know what's gonna come out of it yet, you know? I don't know if you want Mr. Erickson to come here and talk to us about what his problem is or not, you know, other than the fact that the vote didn't go his way, so, um...
I, I guess I, I think that it would be fair if he wanted to come here to express to us. And I don't think that we can pressure the Wild Rice into doing anything, but I think we can also help to understand the situation better and...
That's true. I mean, I don't think we should tell the Wild West Watershed Board to, you know, if we don't like the way they do, then we point different representation, you know? But, uh, uh, the vote was taken and that's done, you know? But Miss, if you feel Mr. Erickson would like to express, I mean, I think he would probably like to express his opinion, you know, what the board is doing. He's wondering, he's concerned about how the money's being spent and stuff like that, and so...
I think it's important to share with us. I think Dwayne's done a great job. He's a good represent, representative. He has a lot of community support, and if he feels that it would be helpful to come and speak with us, that, that would be fine.
Okay, very good. This, I guess, yes, he is a good representative for us, so, um, I'll talk to him about that.
Okay.
Uh, then yesterday, we had the township meeting out of the community, Dilvo Community Center. And, uh, I thank all the people from the county that were out there that talked about, uh, their, their departments, and what's going on in their departments. So appreciate those people being out there and, um, um, pretty much, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wayland?
I had the, uh, detention and jail meetings last week with Commissioner Campbell, and, uh, he reported on that. I had a meeting with, uh, the area agency on aging and, uh, the Clay seniors, and, uh, that was a good meeting. And so there's always good updates from, uh, seniors around the county. And, uh, uh, I think it was helpful for them. The last meeting, uh, somebody from the area agency on aging was there to give them information on the changes that are occurring with Medicare right now. And I think that was pretty helpful for people that were there. Uh, and then yesterday, I was also at the, uh, the township board meeting and, uh, yeah, it was good updates from our staff. And I think all the township representatives appreciate that, and they had a good turnout. There were, there's always a lot of people there, so it was good. Steve did a good job for his first time at bat, so, so that was it for me.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Yes, there, one more item I think we need to discuss, and that's our meetings in December twenty-third, fifth, and January. Probably you've got it on your list, too. But, uh, we need to decide whether, when we're gonna have those meetings. Very good.
I mean, we can talk about it right now. Uh, I believe they're both Christmas.
Uh, Christmas and New Year's are both on Tuesday. So, do we wanna go and, uh, move them both to Wednesdays?
I don't know what your travel plans are as a board, but if you wanna move to Thursday.
Steve, when we talked, was, uh, to move them both to Thursdays, if that would be fine? I mean, typically, that, that first one in January is, there's not a lot of stuff, but we gotta get the sheriff sworn in and...
We have to get our guards moved, so...
Yeah. So Thursdays, move...
Move our guards.
With the, so that would move the December meeting to the, uh, from the twenty-fifth to December twenty-seventh? And it would move the January meeting to January third?
Say that again.
Uh, that would move the December twenty-fifth meeting to Jan, uh, December twenty-seventh?
That's Thursday?
Yeah, and I, I am probably going to be out of town.
Well, that's our final.
That's the final meeting.
Then we have to have it, 'cause there's stuff that we have to clean up for a resolution.
We can, I can maybe work around it. And then moving the January first meeting to January third.
Yeah, motion of...
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve those two meetings, same time, please.
Second.
The second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion?
Is there, um, is there anything in terms of, uh, I don't think, by having the third, there's not an issue with, uh, oath of office issues that have to be done within a certain time period. I think the third is fine.
I think I did my oath on the eighth.
Yeah, I think you have to do it within a certain number of days after the first, but I, we should be fine on the third.
Uh, Steve, if you can double check that there's no conflicts with that, and we'll, um, oh, we didn't vote yet, did we? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Gross?
Right, last week, I, um, had an interview with Minnesota Public Radio regarding our solar energy ordinance. Just, they wanted kind of some background feedback on that. I had the MetroCog meeting where we, uh, because Commissioner Ra, uh, Arlen Rasmussen from Cass County is, will be done the first week of, of, um, December. We did move that meeting forward and held board elections, so I am now that board's chair. Thank you to Frank for giving me that committee, MetroCog.
You are so honored.
Yep, uh, but we did, those meetings, we did shuffle a week earlier because of, uh, that's the meeting that conflicts with the diversion of the authorities, so sometimes we struggle to get a quorum. So we had a presentation from, uh, our North Dakota DOT rep, Bob Walton, about the high tension guardrail projects that they will be implementing throughout the metro and the North Dakota side. They have a comparable, um, our towards zero deaths campaign is the Vision Zero campaign in North Dakota. And so wherever in the metro that there's not the concrete barrier, uh, between the, the different lanes, they'll be adding some high tinsel. The cost for the high tinsel is less than the concrete, but it was, uh, basically, uh, that was it for that. Oh, we did talk about the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Unified Planning Work Program. That's nothing new. I do have a copy here if any of you are interested in that. Our technical representatives have offered a lot of input on that. I had a meeting, a phone meeting with our planning, new planning and zoning director, just to kind of get, um, uh, her up to speed on what the planning commission projects that may or may not have been, uh, finished, wrapped up in the last few months have been. So she can kinda get to work on that. And then she did have some questions on any, uh, big projects that, that I've been working on. I think that she was gonna reach out to you in terms of the Buffalo River study, that everything's set, we're just waiting from FEMA, correct, on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Is that that seventy-five thousand dollar study?
Yep.
And Madam Chair, that, we have checked in on that, and they're calling, they're calling FEMA every three to four days on that.
Just keep on it. Yesterday, I had a meeting. I apologize for missing the Township Officers' meeting, but I had Lakeland Mental Health Center, uh, board. It was our first meeting since our Commissioner, um, from ICL passed away. We had, um, discussion about the access indicators, um, in terms of psychiatrist appointments, and, and that continues to be high. But Lakeland, as an average, is less than Sanford or any, uh, similar agencies in North Dakota. But it's in rural America, it's tricky to find psychiatrists and offer mental health therapy appointments. So that's just something that we'll continue to try to figure out. We accepted the school-linked mental health grant, and as you recall, that's a collaborative regional approach. And we did add Barnesville into that, so that is beneficial for Barnesville. And one thing that we had taken away previously this last year was a, a margin bonus program for all employees. And that's something that I think is a, a recruiting tool. It's, it's minimal in terms of the budget, and because it's margin-based, it basically pays for itself as a bonus program. So, um, if the organization can reach four point four-two of their budgeted margin percent, uh, it's a two hundred and fifty per employee. So we did approve that. There, a lot of work went into that. And then yesterday, I had, I joined in on the discussion in, for our detox, uh, facility with the grant proposal that they're writing. We had a meeting with Klein McCarthy. Uh, I think that it's a great first start. We do have to, um, work quickly to get that done by the December eleventh deadline. I was a little concerned that it was too broad, um, and I, I spoke with Steve Larson this morning about seeing if we can shrink some of those areas to add in additional beds. Because I think the footprint was, was, we would use it, but I think it's larger than the dollars that we wanna allocate for it at this time. But I think that, um, to follow some sort of suit what we've done at the Juvenile Regional in terms of collaborating with different counties and/or cities to recoup some of that funds is something that might, might help sell the grant, but also might help pay for it in the future. And I think that concludes my report. Oh, I did have an additional one, that I met with a couple members of the Morehead City Council and the governor, or, uh, mayor-elect from Morehead concerned with the attorney contract negotiation and wanting to see if they could reopen that with different numbers. And, and from my standpoint, it's, those numbers were based on documented usage, and it just, we're just not flexible with that, unfortunately. Um, and, and if we wanna come to the table in January to discuss any, um, years after that, I'm open to that, but I think for next year, we're really stuck. That concludes my reports.
And maybe if I could just follow up on that, Madam Chair, I've had a couple conversations, uh, with some of the small cities in regards to the legal contract. And I think they're trying to, uh, work their way through on how they're gonna move forward. And one of the questions that came forward, uh, from one of the cities was, uh, our county's willingness to look at potentially a, a one-year contract with some of the small cities, uh, moving forward. I indicated that that was not something that we were probably interested, but that I would bring it forward to the board for any, any discussion.
I guess, from my perspective, and those smaller cities were not brought into the fold as additionally. And when we first sent that letter, they weren't brought into those meetings. And it wasn't until after we had given them an extension, that there was a piecemeal meeting that happened. And I, I just, and there, they were, from who I talked to, uncomfortable with the fact that they were in this umbrella contract, but really didn't have an idea that they weren't under-contracted. They didn't know that they were operating without a contract, and they didn't know that it was something that had been going on for months. And I think it would be tricky, but if someone submits an RFP, uh, we do have a little bit of leeway in that budget that maybe we could make something work in the time being. But, um, you know, I think that might be something that we could entertain.
For a year contract, I, I, I guess I, I don't, uh, agree with a year contract. I think it's, you know, the, one of the reasons we're in this position is the staffing issues that it, it creates. And so, you know, I, I think since we provide the service at what it costs the county to do it, you know, I think, you know, I, I, I still think, you know, not to create more problems for the county attorney's office in the future, if we entertain a, an agreement with the smaller communities that at least a three-year would be reasonable to, to deal with those issues. Otherwise, I think we're just asking for more problems a year from now, so it's, and, and it's, there's no, there's no profit motive here for the county. I mean, we're simply providing them the service if they want it for, you know, for the, for each smaller town, so...
Okay, any other feedback?
Well, I, you know, I, I think in our discussions, and one, this was being discussed through the PICC Committee, too, on, on these issues. It's, um, you know, we had to, we had to establish the two thousand nineteen adjusted budget for the attorney's office. And, you know, and I think I heard from Pam and Steve that if, if our smaller communities still wanted to, uh, have our services that, that would be a little easier to incorporate within our budget right now than to, to have the bigger piece with, and uncertainty with Morehead. that would be a little easier to incorporate within our budget right now than to, to have the bigger piece with, an uncertainty with Morehead. You know, so I, so I think, you know, I, I think we should still be open to, to those small cities, you know? Now, whether or not you do a, a one-year or not, I.
I think with the understanding that we'd be addressing this here in two or three months, really.
Right, and they, and they, you know, they, it's, they would bring that revenue to the table too, so it'd give us a little bit of flexibility, but.
Yeah, again, I think the challenges on, on who the partners would be, you know, it's easier to solve some of the cases that are, that with the current staffing plan that we put forward last week, that would be easier to, to do that. I think if you look at some of the larger contracts, it may be more challenging in needing to hire people. And I think part of our concern with the city of Morehead was bringing people on with the idea that we would have to look to potentially lay them off in, in a year if we didn't have that, that contract. And so, I, whatever the board would like, I just would move forward to give some information to them on how we'd like to do that.
I think, see what they propose.
Okay, and, and maybe just if they're interested, we could set up a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
I did have just a couple of other things for my report. Again, participated last Tuesday in the highway tracking. Commissioner Campbell and Gross have discussed that. In regards to the, the juvenile center owner meeting, I did have some conversations with, with Lori after that meeting. You know, first option, again, I guess, and we do have some, you know, with the jail and the law enforcement program projects, we looked at utilizing contractor's contingency. Construction engineers was happy to utilize some of those funds up to, to about the hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. So, we do have some funds that would be available there. Lori also shared that she's looking in on the interest of the bond that we have. We'll have some, have some additional funds there. And also, we took out, in our bonds, we took out a little bit more money in that because of our, our status as a county. And so, there may be some additional funds to, to utilize in that bond, original bond. I also had asked her to look into, to, to some of the potential cash fund balance that we have in, in the reserve. I know last year, we did have some money that the advisory board agreed to put into that in, in preparation of this project. And so, we also talked about some capital improvement dollars that are in, in the, in the funding and also if there's any, some of, some of the shared projects that we've had at the Family Service Center, if there's other dollars that would be able to be picked up there, so. So, I, I think that the good part is, is we're out of the ground now. Hopefully, the, the big major surprises are, are, are done. And so, the other good part is, is because we've been slow in some of the other areas, they have been able to work into some of the other phases. And so, we are a little bit farther along than, than maybe we would have been otherwise, so. So, well, as we get more information there, we can report on that. On Tuesday, or Wednesday, participated in personnel issue meeting with Darren. I also went to the Highway Department staff meeting that afternoon. Thursday, I, I attended the county administrator court meeting in Little Falls. Focused a lot on budgets and their upcoming levies, discussions, workforce issues. Lot of the, the outstate counties are having issues with, with daycares and, and having adequate, adequate place to bring their kids. And we also talked about our elections that we had in each of our counties. Participated yesterday in the Association of Township Officials. And again, a share of appreciation for our department heads and, and staff that showed up. We were able to introduce Hallie to the group and, and also Sheriff Elect, Amptin. Did have a brief conversation with Representative Eakin in the discussion of the, the funding residential treatments. We've had some discussion in my, in my updates on, on the impact, if that, that dollars go away. And he certainly, he said that that was going to be a focus of, of their upcoming legislative session. So, we'll see where that goes. As Sheriff Amptin, Sheriff Elect, Amptin mentioned, I did have a co, a few conversations with him and Sheriff Burquist yesterday. Yesterday afternoon, we had additional conversations on some human resources and also participated in the Department of Human Service grant on the detox center. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross.
Yeah, I also completed that Board of Equalization training, so I've got that done. I don't know if anybody else has done it or not, but I guess I got one certification. I mean, we got one cert, excuse me.
Thank you, Frank. Anything else?
At that, we are adjourned.